I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move over to silence. Roll call.
Consulor Crum.
Present.
Consulor Matthews.
Here.
Consulor Coats.
Here.
Consulor Chamberlain.
Here.
Consulor Allen.
Present.
Consulor Sturts.
Present.
All members are present, we have a quorum.
Motion to approve the previous meeting's minutes. So moved.
Second. Motion made by Consulor Allen and second by Consulor Coats. Consulor Allen.
Yes.
Consulor Coats.
Yes.
Consulor Crum.
Yes.
Consulor Matthews.
Yes.
Consulor Chamberlain.
Yes.
Consulor Sturts.
Of staying.
Five yeas, one abstain, motion carries.
Names of individuals wishing to address council. I see there's three or four, two or three candidates out here. Anybody want to speak? John? Kathy? Rick?
Oh, thank you.
Disobserving.
Welcome. On the committee reports, utility.
The utility committee met last Thursday morning to discuss the scheduled rate increase in the water and sewer rates that was postponed from April 1st and is slated to take effect November 1st. We had a lot of discussion with our superintendent out of the wastewater treatment plant about the equipment and the repairs that he needs made out there and about what it's going to cost in the near future to take care of some of those things. Also, some of the things regarding the water treatment plant also came up. We feel the need to explain our position as clearly as we can, and for that reason, I'm going to do a little bit of reading. As far as some of the projects that are coming up that need to be replaced, we have the replacement of final clarifier drives at an estimated cost of $400,000, replacement of primary clarifier drives, estimated cost $400,000, replacement of influence screw pumps, $600,000, digester cover, $390,000, two chemical pumps, $8,000, light fixtures in the office area because they can't buy bulbs for those any longer, $1,100. EPA is also requiring us to start doing something different with the disposal of our biosolids. This project can be broken into phases. The estimated cost is $3 million. We have aging water and sewer lines that need to be replaced. We have water tower maintenance and painting estimated at a million? Is that what that says?
Could be.
These are related to the water treatment plant. Maintenance and painting of the east clarifier at $70,000, installation of advanced treatment equipment, and for deep VP and other quality enhancement. And I'm not sure what that means, but that along with a lime slaker re- no. That's one that we don't have a cost on. A lime slaker replacement times two is $300,000. There's always something coming up that we need a lot of money for. At the end of our meeting on Thursday, we had pretty much agreed that we would let this rate increase go through, but I've had some feedback since then, and it sounds like we need to have another committee meeting. So right at this point, I'd like to postpone any action from the utility committee until the next meeting.
Are these projects that are going to have to be done all at once? Or are you going to spread these out?
No. We've been spreading them out, and they will continue to be spread out, but the fact remains that we are required by law to have a fee structure that supports all of those projects and expenses. We have to have that money in those funds from the fees that we charge. So looking forward, we have to make sure that we've got the money coming in to support it.
So all the projects so far that we've wanted to do, we've been able to fund in compliance with our code?
Yes.
So we haven't?
Even if it meant that we had to borrow upfront to do it, we still have the rate structure to make the debt payment.
Yeah. Well, I mean, can I just ask some questions? I don't know who's going to answer them.
Whoever can.
All right. In October of 2012, about this time last year, we had a discussion about rate increases then. And then we were told that of a need to maintain the water towers, paint, whatever. So we went ahead against my objection and raised those rates. Have we done anything in regards to the water towers?
Physically, not yet.
No? Okay. So what's presented to us in October of 2012 is a need to convince us that water rates are need to be increased, sewer treatment rates need to be increased. Once the vote is done, that project wasn't done?
Yet.
Done.
It still needs to be done, though.
Okay.
We still need to have funds to do it.
And then following up, then at these items that were presented that need to be done, at what point did these items become to the point where they need to be replaced?
Well, most of them result from stuff that's worn and over 25, 35 years old in some cases.
So they've needed to be replaced for some time?
We have, I'm going to answer it this way. We have always tried to be frugal and do the best with what we had to work with, but there comes a point in time where despite your best efforts, things are going to wear out on you, or you're not going to be able to replace things with the same types of parts and so on that are now obsolete, so.
So these items here have been to the point of in need of replacement for the last nine months, let's say?
We have known that they would need to be replaced at some point.
For the last nine months, surely, right? These things, it's not like yesterday these things became defective.
No.
All right. In the last nine months before this water rate increase has become an issue of discussion, were any of these needs ever brought to council's attention so we could appropriate money to make these repairs?
Shane, I think what it does-
No, this is a question.
No, but I think I might have an answer, or it might be another question on top of yours. I think what this amounts to is a few years ago, we hired that company to do, to say what the water rates, to do a study. And I don't know if that was before, were you on the council when we did that?
Six years is how long it's been here.
And I don't remember for sure when that was done, but-
About that time.
They set what the rates had to be, you know, for, to keep up with.
Based on our infrastructure and the age of it?
Right. And that's what I take it they based it on, is stuff like that and the sewer water lines and, you know, everything like that, if I'm correct. And I think, like, they were already passed, the rates were already passed, it's just there's a couple of times we didn't increase them.
And I think one of the things that we talked about too is it would be helpful for us to have a schedule for the age of these things and a schedule of maybe when they're going to be seriously looked at to be replaced. I mean, if all the infrastructure is the same age, that could really be damaging to the budget if a couple of things go out at the same time, if we're not prepared for it. So that was one of the things that we talked about too.
So to, back to my question over the last, none of these things have been brought to our attention for appropriations for these things to be done, right?
The primary clarifiers, yes, but in this new budget cycle that we're about to enter into, some of that will happen.
Then the reason why I ask that question, Dennis, is because honestly, as a council member, if you were to bring some of these things to committee, I mean, let's get some of this done, you know? So it's not presented all bam, one time, here we need $6 million. I'm going to make a motion tonight that we appropriate funds to replace light fixtures. I'm going to make a motion tonight to reappropriate funds to replace two chemical pumps. Let's do it. If these are actual needs, let's get them done. The money's there, correct? Yeah, the money's there. So Shane makes a good point. And then my next question, I think Jamie, you might be able to answer this. These are, when I reference these numbers, I've rounded down. So since 2009, the information that the committee, the utility committee referenced, since 2009, when I add up all the unencumbered funds from the wastewater fund, since 2009, I get to a $7.9 million figure. Those are unencumbered funds. Where does that money go?
Are you adding them all together?
The water revenue fund, the spreadsheet that was provided, when I come down here to the bottom, the last line, the unencumbered fund balances since 2009, and I add all those together, I come up with $7.9 million.
Okay, you wouldn't add them together because they get re-appropriated to the next year?
So our total fund balance right now is two, $2.0 million in the wastewater revenue fund.
As of September 30th, it's 1.3 in the water fund.
Yeah, and the wastewater is a-
And the wastewater is 2.01.
Okay. And we're projecting that we're going to recoup $516,000 from this year?
That was the original budget.
Okay. So it's possible that at the end of this year, we have $2.5 million sitting there, right?
You've got a big payment coming out of there directly going.
Yes, in December, we have a debt payment.
And that debt payment would be how much?
$200,000.
Okay. So it's possible at the end of 2013, we could have $2.3 million sitting in there, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then referring to the other fund, would be the water revenue fund, and it's projected that at the end of 2013, we'll have $2 million sitting in there. With the understanding of those fund balances where they're at, I'm glad our council president has delayed taking action on the utility committee report, and I hope there is further discussion within the committee as to whether or not we need to increase wastewater by 15% and water by 5%. That's all I've got. I mean, Dennis, bring it forward, let's get some of this done, so it's not all at once.
And Shane, I mean, I agree with what you're saying. I don't think it's going to happen all at once. It's sort of like a planned maintenance. It's on the burner.
Yeah.
You know, it's just highlighting, these things are out there.
You know what it seems similar to is what I compare it to is school levies. A lot of times, school levies will dangle the care of sports. Oh, if we don't pass it, we're going to take away sports. Well, here, I think this is almost, comes off as a scare tactic. Here, we got our towers, our water towers, if we don't take care of them, they're going to fall apart. We raise the rates and nothing's done. And now it comes time and we get a list of five things we need to do, or our water's not going to taste as good as it should. And then what I'm fearing is that we raise the rates and then nothing's done.
True.
So that's my concern.
Sure.
Dennis, where are we at with that as far as the towers being painted? Because I think that they had to delay that for a reason.
We-
The company that was actually going to paint the towers.
No, not to paint, but to do the design and the preparation work to decide exactly how much maintenance had to be done to the structure prior to painting and removal and lead abatement and all of those kinds of things. There was a delay entering into an agreement with that firm, and we have the details of the final agreement worked out, although I don't think to date Tom or I have seen the final draft when it comes out, but it should be coming daily. Once that's put to ink, then we can move forward with that.
If we, and this is kind of backing up Shane over here, I think anyway, I think this is kind of what you were saying, if we have the money and we can afford to spend the money, then let's do it. And then let's fix some things that are on the list that need to be fixed, if we can afford now to pay for it. Correct? Is that kind of where you're coming from?
It's right where I'm at, yeah.
I mean, I'm thinking the same line, I mean-
And if we really need to replace light fixtures at $1,100-
$1,100, it's going to be done.
It's going to be done. And so, you know, we take care of the digester cover this year, take care of the influence screw pumps at $600,000 next year, always setting money aside for infrastructure issues that might arise throughout the year. Is that a good approach from your perspective, Dennis?
Not totally, because you've got to have, you've got to have a reserve, a decent-sized reserve for the unknown thing like our carbon dioxide tank that died on us. There are some much larger ticket items that could, you know, just like anything, expire immediately and you have a need.
I mean, we have a first-
And we have, I think through this process, and I can't quote you exactly when, in the sequence of past rate increases, was, I think we did go away with one or reduce a couple along the way, because we didn't have as good an idea of where we were, where we were going to be. So I don't think it's been done with a blind eye.
No.
And certainly, we paid folks that were supposed to be better at predicting this kind of stuff than we are ourselves, to a degree.
I'm just, you know, I'm just concerned about those folks out there that are struggling from check to check, and if we can live within our means right now at the rates that they're set, why not try to continue on that so we don't, you know, further-
Shane, I think, you know, to go back, the study was done five or six years ago that, you know, Jeff alluded to, our rates were one of the lowest rates around.
And they hadn't been touched since like 1990.
Yeah, and what our rates were was eventually catching up with everybody.
Like right now, I mean, I thought about this at 3:30 today, if you call Archibald and see what their rates are, but I didn't.
Yeah.
I mean, does anybody here know, like, what our neighbors are compared to us?
Yes, I do, because I just had this conversation with Bill Rippon all, two hours ago, he was over at my house. Waseon has the second lowest rates in Fulton County. Archibald's first, and we're second, and then it goes from there. And you want high water rates, go to Delta or Metamor. I mean, they're just outrageous, just outrageous. Metamor is three times higher than we are.
That's good to know.
And-
We're not out of line.
No, we're not.
When this study come forward, we're projecting for the future of the replacements. And nobody wants an increase. No, and if our funds weren't solvent and they were going in the wrong direction, I'd be a fan of an increase.
Yeah.
But right now, I see them being strong, so. But I'm glad Council President Crum is delaying action, and I hope the committee has more good discussions.
If we can maintain, I think we should try to maintain. If we can't and we see something in the future that might sneak up and get us, then Shane, we may have to, may have to raise it, you know? But we're still going to be lower, you know, than most in the county.
I just feel bad asking for more money from the citizens when we're sitting on $4 million. You know, that's just-
We're always going to sit on something, like, you know, Dennis alluded to, there's always the unknown.
Oh, definitely.
What pops up, what breaks.
But some of these projects here, Dennis, aren't some of these wastewater and some of them are water projects?
Yes, correct.
All right. So it's not like we'd be depleting any one of the funds, we'll be pulling from both.
Karen, what type of timeline do you have as to three weeks?
Well, the next increase, the next increase is legislated to take effect November 1st, so we'll have another committee meeting before the next council meeting.
Okay.
Shane had made a motion, do you want to wait until November to address that, Shane, or you want to-
I mean, how bad, I mean, I'd make a motion that we appropriate funds, replace light fixtures. If they can't see what they're doing, I worry about them.
Sure.
I'll second that.
And I want to make sure Dave Pike and the boys are taken care of.
Motion made by Consulor Chamberlain and second by Consulor Crum. Is there any discussion?
The only discussion is there's probably that much money in their supply budget that they could go ahead and do it.
I will look at that, but-
Okay.
But get it done.
So the funds are already there?
They may have that much in their supply line.
All right, we're moving on before we dig any deeper. Here we go.
No kidding.
So motion dismissed?
No, we're going to carry on.
Consulor Crum?
Yes.
Consulor Matthews?
Yes.
Consulor Coats?
Yes.
Consulor Chamberlain?
Let's do it.
Consulor Allen?
Yes.
Consulor Sturts?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Trees.
Tree commission. Well, after that long discussion, now it isn't fitting that we have a tree commission. So I'll tell you what I do and keep your claws down, I'll keep it short. Tree commission met on September 12th, and Tom Savage reported that we're still doing some pruning, and they're caught up on all the pruning, they're still going through the parks. It was reported that we're going to try to plant 15 more trees at Homecoming Park, and we're going to try to do that every year for four years. Our letters that we had written to the landowners who needed to remove some dead trees have worked, and they're working on those, and we certainly appreciate that. And we also sent a letter to the homeowner on the big tree that we've been talking about on Oak and Shoop, and we're in negotiations with that as we speak. I think it's moving along well. I think we'll probably get something done on that. The booster of the year, which council knows we've done for the last couple of years, we're in the process of trying to come up with names for that, and these individuals or groups, what we're looking for is people who's helped the city or the tree commission in the past, and this individual or group does not have to be from Waseon. So other than that, a lot of general discussion, and that was end of our meeting. So, not bad, huh?
Not bad, not bad. Moving on to department heads. David?
I'd like to share that I've had a few individuals come to the regional planning office and inquire about funding for some properties in the downtown. I briefly mentioned it at the last city council meeting. We've had some brief discussion with staff. We're going to look into making sure that these property owners have the capacity to bring their properties up to code, and possibly we may have some revolving loan fund money available to them if they can accomplish that. Also, I've had Tony Britton contact me concerning some revolving loan fund, funding for her potential business, The Upper Crest Downtown, so I'm working with her on that, so hopefully that is something that can create a couple of jobs downtown.
David, if that does not happen, will that business still open?
That, I'm not sure. I'd have to talk with Tony further about that, but I'm sure if anybody can get ahold of her, she'd be open to discuss that. I know that there's some grant funds that she can acquire, but it's just kind of on hold, it hinges on a couple of other things, so trying to help her out the best that I can right now. She's submitted a fairly thorough business plan to my office, so I'm just waiting on an application to be submitted with payment of that application so we can forward it on to the committee.
Good. Chief Sluter?
Well, it's Fire Safety Week, and we'll be, which turns into Fire Safety Month for us, we'll be busy in the schools all this week doing safety education programs and tours here at the fire station. We're also going to help the school with homecoming celebration this Thursday night and Friday, so we'll be with that. And the feather parties all scheduled and ready to go next month on the 16th of November, and this Saturday at the end of Fire Safety Week is our open house in conjunction with the police department. So come up here between 10 and 2 on Saturday and meet some free food and demonstrations, and you can go to the fire station if you choose to do so. That's all I have here.
Good, thank you. Chief Torbit?
Along with the fire department, we will be helping with the open house. Also, we've conditionally been approved for our Bulletproof Fest grant. It is a federal grant, so it may take us a while before we see the paperwork for that, since they're kind of closed right now. So I don't have a dollar figure for you, but we're hoping to see that by the first of the year so that we can, before our next allotment of purchases comes up. We're also going to be submitting the JAG LE grant the end of this month, and we just got notice that that has just opened up, so I don't have a dollar figure on that, but we've been pretty fortunate on that, getting it at about 70% over time. That's about it.
We could have let that open up, we could take a fifth car out of the accident.
No, we could give you a ride in the back, Jack, if you want.
If you just aim to get a free ride.
I've never been in the front seat.
It's usually the trunk for him, man. Hold on. Tom?
Oh, we've been fairly busy fielding some calls, goes along with what David has said. We have two businesses downtown that have bought properties and are in the process of remodeling. We also have Northwest Foam Products putting a large addition on, it's over $500,000 addition. We have a couple of other industrial sites that are adding on to it in preparation for the open house. We did have all the carpets covered, and just to show you guys we care about you, we had this carpet cleaned too. It hadn't been cleaned since '95, so we thought we might get that, so we did go through it, and the whole place has been cleaned up, so.
Good.
But we've been busy, and it's, you know, our violations, of course, we're at the end of the grass season, and we're winding down the sidewalk, so things will be good.
All right, thank you. Dennis?
Our friends at ODOT have informed us that they are going to require Phase 1 environmental studies of nine different properties along our Linfoot Street project, which will cost us some time and some money. But argue as I may, or try to discuss as I may with them, that's what we're going to do. The Public Works guys have switched over to leave, so don't put any more branches out. And they won't switch back over to doing limbs and so on until spring. So at the end of leaf season, they're done and ready for snow. Talked about plenty about committee work, and the airport highway sewer, sanitary sewer is complete, so job well done there.
Dennis, if I could share another job well done to the crew that you hired to do the path to the Homecoming Park, awesome. I mean, I haven't had tons of compliments about that, so I'm sure that's getting a lot of use. Kudos. Thanks, Dennis. Jamie?
I mentioned our credit card machine last meeting, and it did not come through. It'll be here tomorrow, so we'll have training tomorrow, and we'll be able to accept credit card payments by noon afternoon going forward, and that's all I have today.
Thank you. Tom?
Mayor, been working with Chief Torbit on reviewing his Lexipol protocol, not sure what the proper terminology is for that big hefty book.
Policy and Procedures.
Policy and Procedures manual, so working through that. We've got some more to go. Working on a number of, or several things in connection with the revolving loan fund. Don's Automotive is seeking a subordination, it's really a procedural issue, but seeking a subordination to our original loan, he's refinancing, and then also doing some work on collecting the two counts that we have that are not paying, and working with David on getting an RLF meeting set up to take care of those issues. Working with the negotiation team for the upcoming union contract discussion, we are, I think, have submitted to the employees a, have we submitted the survey?
Yes.
To the employees to get some feedback, to see what folks are thinking about the current insurance policy that's available, and what kind of changes they might like, may like to see, and then there'll be an information meeting for the, on insurance, did we get that set?
October 29.
October 29, so employees will be encouraged to attend that, to learn more about what Obamacare may be impacting- about what Obamacare may be, how it may be impacting insurance moving forward, and also just to get some information from the employees about their thoughts about the insurance. Just a quick word about ordinance two-thousand-and-thirteen-nine that's before you this evening, that is designed to affect council's desire to repeal the ten-dollar cap on the crossing guard salary. The recommendation by the council was to repeal the entirety of nineteen-ninety-nine-dash-eighteen, but I think to affect its intent, really just wanna repeal Section Two and then repeal Section Twenty of the original ordinance. The some, the, the effect of repealing those two sections will be that there will be no limit on crossing guard salary. If council decides at some point to set one, they would have to do that, but with the passing of ordinance two-thousand-and-thirteen-nine, that will eliminate the cap, the ten-dollar cap and any other cap that existed prior to that. I think that's it.
That's all?
That's all. I'm happy to talk more if you like.
That's enough. Moving on, first reading of legislation, Resolution two-thousand-and-thirteen-dash-thirty, authorizing the mayor to enter an, into an amendment, I'll get on to this here, amend the agreement for indigent defense services in county court with the Fulton County Commissioners. First reading.
Sogger. Motion made by Consular Matthews and second by Consular Sturts. Is there any discussion? Consular Matthews?
Yes.
Consular Sturts?
Yes.
Consular Crum?
Yes.
Consular Coast?
Yes.
Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Allen?
Yes.
Six sheaves, zero nays, Resolution two-thousand-and-thirteen-dash-thirty passes on first reading.
Ordinance two-thousand-and-thirteen-dash-nine, repealing Section Two of ordinance nineteen-ninety-nine-dash-eighteen and Section Twenty of ordinances nineteen-ninety-dash-thirty-five, eliminate pay cap for crossing guards.
So moved.
Sogger.
Motion made by Consular Coast and second by Consular Allen. Is there any discussion? Consular Coast?
Yes.
Consular Allen?
Yes.
Consular Sturts?
Yes.
Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Matthews?
Yes.
Consular Crum?
Yes.
Six sheaves, zero nays, ordinance two-thousand-and-thirteen-dash-nine passes on first reading.
There are no second readings, so on to third reading of legislation, ordinance two-thousand-and-thirteen-dash-seven, amending the codified ordinances of the city of Waseon to add Section seven-one-nine, sweepstakes internet cafe to Part Seven Business Regulation Code.
Third reading.
Sogger.
Motion made by Consular Crum and second by Consular Sturts. Is there any discussion? Consular Crum?
Yes.
Consular Sturts?
Yes.
Consular Allen?
Yes.
Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Coast?
Yes.
Consular Matthews?
Yes.
Six sheaves, zero nays, ordinance two-thousand-and-thirteen-dash-seven passes on third reading and will be in effect in thirty days.
Ordinance two-thousand-and-thirteen-dash-eight, amending Sections five-oh-five-point-seventeen and nine-fifty-seven of the codified ordinances of the city of Waseon, park rules.
Third reading.
Second. Motion made by Consular Matthews and second by Consular Coast. Is there any discussion? Consular Matthews?
Yes.
Consular Coast?
Yes.
Consular Crum?
Yes.
Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Allen?
Yes.
Consular Sturts?
Yes.
Six sheaves, zero nays, ordinance two-thousand-and-thirteen-dash-eight passes on third reading and will be in effect in thirty days.
On to new business, we have two establishments requiring liquor permit changes, Ottawa Oil Company Incorporated, one-fifty-one South Fulton Street, Waseon, Ohio, C-one and C-two. Chief, you wanna explain what those are?
Just, it's a change in the stockholders' ownership, C-one and C-two's for carryout purposes, just a formality, basically.
No action, chief, or do, should we, no action is the-
I wouldn't recommend any of that.
Okay.
They're in compliance.
And that's probably true of the following, downtown Billards LLC, one-twenty-three, North Fulton Street, D-five and D-six.
Would you like to explain what a D-five and D-six is, just real quick, chief?
D-five is a, basically a permit to sell alcohol until two-thirty in the morning, D-six is for Sunday sales, the D-six will only come into, into effect if that precinct has Sunday sales allowed, I'm not sure if that one does or not. What they're doing is they're transferring a license from, that they purchased from Toledo out here.
All right. I'd like to comment, the fire department coming back with the feather party, great idea, hope the community supports it, good idea. When's that?
Should be the third, Saturday, sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Yeah, third Saturday in November.
Hey, Rick, fire department used to pass out smoke detectors, that's something that we don't do anymore.
We still do that, we take that out of the funds that we raised, that we raised at the feather party and that, we spend about a thousand dollars a year passing out smoke detectors to the first grade students every year.
Okay.
We've got them packaged and ready to go for tomorrow or the next day.
Just haven't heard anything about it.
Yep.
Good deal. Motion approved, the bills as presented?
So moved.
Sogger.
Motion made by Consular Coast and second by Consular Sturts. Consular Coast?
Yes.
Consular Sturts?
Yes.
Consular Allen?
Yes.
Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Matthews?
Yes.
Consular Crum?
Yes.
Six sheaves, zero nays, motion carries.
I can see he gets pretty bored at consular. I do want it noted, he fell asleep during the tree commission report.
Even in the short way.
Motion adjourned.
Motion made by Consular Allen and second by Consular Crum for adjournments. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.